Somebody turn on.
Oh, okay, alright. Lift a break in?
Testing.
Oh, yeah, I know it's like.
But we can see this here. Yeah, that's perfect.
Just a little ploy to get the, get it moving along.
Alright, welcome to 2025. We are here with a bang. So the first thing is we're gonna do the Business Spotlight Program and this was started so we can make our residents aware of our wonderful small businesses that we have here. You know, our bread and butter here is the small businesses. We don't have a lot of big backs, big box stores and we thoroughly appreciate that. We love our small businesses. They just come in here and treat the city as their own and we get to listen to all the stories about how they came here and why they came here. So for this month, I'd like to bring up Lisa Patino. She's from Motivated by Lisa and I was able to visit her a couple of weeks ago. She's over on Bloomfield, right across the street from McCullough Middle School and she has the coolest women's only gym and I mean, it is a one-stop shop. It's a lube and tube. You go on in there and you come out looking beautiful and skinny. So Lisa, come on up and I'll let you give a little bit on what's your about.
I wish it was that easy, huh? In and out. First, I want to thank the mayor because she has been so amazing since the day we did my spotlight, just with so much help and just direction that has been amazing, like whirlwind this past couple of weeks for me. But I'm right here on Bloomfield and Cerritos, I'm an all-women's gym and my main focus is on everybody, just women coming in and in a judge-free environment to work at their own level and their own pace and help guide them through just a healthier lifestyle choice with nutrition and mind, body and spirit all in one. And then try and get them in the cold plunge, that's always another battle, but usually I get them in there eventually, so that's really just what I'm all about. It's just an all-women's really great space to feel good and come in like, just, it's more mental than it is physical most of the time, so it just works out for all the hard-working moms and wives and, you know, their careers and everything out there, so that's pretty much it.
I think she's selling herself, excuse me, a little bit short. She does the gym, but she also has, like she said, the cold plunge pool. You're getting an infrared sauna room, which is very cool, make us all look like we're 20. You've got a girl that comes in and does lashes and brows.
Yes, they have two private suites and they do like waxing and brows and lashes.
You've got a food delivery service, smoothies. Yeah, so she's, like I say, she's the one-stop-shop. If you want to look beautiful, go to her.
Thank you so much.
So we would like to present you with Certificate of Requiem Nation. We appreciate that you decided to call Los Alamos your home for your business and hopefully it'll do gangbusters. I'm sure it already is. And, yeah, and make sure that everybody comes and visits and we're gonna do a little snippet of our spotlight.
Okay.
New year, new week, both of the schools make the overall or comfortable fads. Motivated by Lisa has got your back. Offering a variety of fitness plan options, Lisa's goal is to empower women to shine through customizable plans and boost their self-confidence. Avoid the overcrowded gyms. Motivated by Lisa is a bootcamp-style gym with adaptable fitness plans, whether it be muscle building, flexibility training, cardio, or weight loss. There is no shortage of applicable goals. Get motivated today. Please visit motivatedbylisa.com.
There you go, there's your call to action. Thank you very much. And next, we're going to recognize our employer, employee of the quarter. Louis Reyes, come on up. So, since Louis has been promoted to lead foreman last year, he's consistently demonstrated exceptional leadership, dedication, initiative. He has far exceeded any expectations as our Public Works Department always does. He's proven time, time and time again that he's capable of meeting any challenge and we have a lot of them here, so he's the perfect guy for the job and I would like to invite Dr. Noda to come and say a couple of words.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, today I had the privilege of meeting Luis's family over there and his wife, I believe it's Jessica, said that he's very dedicated to the city and I said, "Oh, we know." You know, he's very dedicated, he's our lead foreman, so he's on the ground with our crew and again, the Public Works Division maintains the city, whether it's potholes, tree trimming, you know, irrigation at the parks, you know, they oversee landscaping contracts, street sweeping, so it's a big, big division. Luis has a big, big job, but he's up to the task. We're very proud that he's leading our team. Like I said, he's on the, you know, boots with, on the ground and again, congratulations on being the employee of the quarter.
And I'll present you with this. Thank you for being one of those employees that treats our city as your own with pride and just keeping everything beautiful. Appreciate it, thank you.
Speech.
Yeah. Louis, do you want to do one with your family? Come on! Alright, now we're gonna get to the fun stuff. I'd like Craig Kohler to come on up. Craig is our finance director. Not a lot of people know who he is because he's back behind the scenes, but man, the work he does is absolutely amazing. He's in charge of our entire finance department, our investments, which are doing very well, making sure we've got money in the bank and making sure we're making money on that money in the bank. And so we are, we were awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. The GFOA established this award in 1945 to encourage and assist governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare annual comprehensive financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. The goal of the program is to ensure that the public has the information that they need. And I know working with Craig on the Budget Standing Committee, he's always got the answers, he's always a step ahead of us and we've had a balanced budget, how many years now? Five years in a row and our investments are doing well and he's constantly moving the money to make sure that we're optimizing those and just is a great behind-the-scenes guy that nobody really knows, but because of his expertise, we're able to do a lot more because we're making money on our money, so appreciate that and would you like to say something?
It's a dedicated effort. I have a team of dedicated staff that my endeavors in this arena. I have one member here tonight if she wants to come up or acknowledge her. Barbara Biscotto is the newest member of the team, is finance manager, hired in November, but it's a team effort and I'm something that I'm proud to continue on in honor of the city.
And I don't know if you have any more wall space, but here's, yeah. So here's the Award of Financial Reporting Achievement by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. So that's a big deal and we're honored to have this again. Good, good, good. Let's see, oh, so now I need City Manager Chet, Dr. Noda and Craig, don't sit down, come on up, come back up. So during her tenure in Congress, Michelle Steele recognized the dedication and leadership of Craig, Ron and Chet provided to the city. She provided these certificates for each one of you to applaud your achievements. And I'm supposed to say nice things? I don't know, I think, I think the certificate will be good. There's that and there's Chet and Craig and I already gushed on Craig a little bit. Ron, he started at Los Alamos when he was a little tiny guy and worked his way up through the ranks to deputy city manager now, so he's in charge of a whole bunch. He's also in charge of Chet, making sure he behaves, which is good. And Chet, you know, he came in, we were looking for a city manager and he came in five years ago? Actually, it was five years ago today.
Oh, God.
There you go. There you go. And has done just amazing things, his wheelhouse is economic development and we're starting to see that come to fruition in our city while keeping Los Allo true to its form and its reputation. We've been able to do just amazing things with our businesses and moving forward and the look of our city and everything, so we are thrilled to have all three of these gentlemen on our staff. Have lots of fun with them, have a good sense of humor and they do their work very, very well and we're very proud to call you part of the Los Allo family. Oh, don't even sit down, Chet, come on up. So during her tenure as state senator, Janet Nguyen presented the certificate, this resolution to you, accommodating you on your fantastic job, not so much in, not as much in the city, but also, wow! But throughout the county as well. You're known in the county as being one of the get-or-done type of city managers and like I say, we appreciate all of your work and your expertise that you bring into us and you're candid about, "No, that's not gonna work, let's try this." And so we look for many, many more years with you and apparently the politicians like you a lot too. So congratulations and let's take another picture. Alright. Okay, I've used enough of my words for the night, so we're moving on to oral communications. This is the time to come forward to speak on any agenda item. As no public hearings are on tonight's agenda, comments will be not called on for each item. If you want to speak, please fill out a speaker card or sign in at the podium sheet. This allows staff to contact you for follow-up if needed. Do I have any public comments?
My name is Kathy Salai and I'm a long-term resident of Los Alamos. And it's rather ironic that I'm here tonight as you're presenting all these accommodations because as a long-term resident, I started working in the city of Los Alamos in 1978 and was able to move here in 1987. But my recent experiences with the city have been more than disappointing on so many levels. One of the, it appears that the residents have lost some of their stature as far as the city, the employees, the staff and the city council would like you to see. I've discussed my thoughts with other people, others have felt the same. Don't know when the city council meetings are, they used to be by monthly, now they're monthly. We no longer have LATV, so all we're seeing are repeat city council meetings. But you don't know that until the end of the meeting when they say, "In the September meeting or in the August meeting," then you realize that you've been watching something that is months old. Because if you don't catch it at the beginning, you don't see that. There's nothing that indicates that anywhere. So we don't have LATV, we're broadcasting old meetings, we don't have a local newspaper any longer. We often are doing things that the residents don't know what we're doing. I formally sat on the traffic commission, I reapplied for a position. Perfectly honestly, I was not even called for an interview. I have probably only spoken to maybe one or two of you personally in my entire 38 years in this city. To not even receive the courtesy of an interview surprised me. I've been a volunteer, I volunteered at the museum, I have volunteered on numerous, numerous city projects for the 38 years plus the nine I worked in the city right next door, okay? Residents are very concerned about that bike lane going on Cerritos Avenue because something is gonna happen. I came up there the other night and had this woman not had a red blinker on her bike. I would not have seen her. She wore black, she was on a black bike, she was moving pretty quick. I'm turning right on Cerritos and she's going straight through. There's no consistency on any of the striping. The striping coming south on Los Alamos Boulevard allows to make a right turn without interfering with the bike lane, but going north where it's heavily congested and there are more right turns, we have to sit and wait for the person who's going straight ahead of us. People are cutting through, I noticed that we now have red cones up because they don't want them to cut into the bike lane, which they were doing, they're going through El Pollo Loco, they don't know what lane is theirs. Something, somebody's going to be hurt there or there's going to be an accident. But if it were consistent, it would be easier to follow. There's no explanation on the website or the weekly newsletter that we get as to what these lanes are doing, what the striping means, what the striping's for, what's the positive value attached to it. I received a ticket not too long ago because the red marking on this curb is not clear and in certain times of the day you can't see it. It falls within that white line, which would indicate that possibly you can park there. I don't see any other corner where this problem appears. But then, I paid the ticket. I paid the ticket on December 9th, it was due on the 11th, they cashed the ticket on the 30th. I still haven't been able to get cleared to get a sticker for my car. So that's where that stands. The consistency really concerns me. The fact that we have reserved spaces out here in a small town of 12,000 residents, if you want to encourage the residents to come, make space available for them. To prioritize city council members over the residents when you arrive here much earlier seems awfully disrespectful to me. The left turn pocket onto Humboldt had to be restriped because it was incorrectly striped the first time. It was heading in the wrong direction. Now you'd have to be a cruise ship that moves right and left in order to fit in that amount of space. I think Gary could probably attest to that, he lives in that neighborhood. That space doesn't allow you to get in that pocket. Every car is much longer than that. But going back to the ticket I received, I've received more tickets in the last six months than in 38 years of being a resident in Los Alamos. I'm not sure why, I'm not sure if the code enforcement officer is being instructed to go write as many tickets as possible so that we can raise revenue. I don't know what the answer is, but I'm not doing anything different than I was doing for the last 38 years suddenly that I'm getting a half dozen tickets. So, and I'm sure I'm not alone. So I would appreciate maybe a little consideration, reminding you that the residents are A number one and first in this community especially. We are very, very small. We do not need layers and layers and layers and layers of bureaucracy.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, we still do have LATV. We do it live, we broadcast it live and we also do the replays. It could be on LAT, YouTube channel and LATV anytime. Regarding the newspaper, that is not under our control, that is a private entity, it's their distribution issues and we have no say or control over that, so just wanted to make that very, very clear. Any other public comment?
May I add to that? LATV is to also show sporting events, things from the high school, many, many, many other cultural things that people didn't necessarily get tickets to or be able to attend.
I understand and we are.
That's no longer available.
Right, and we are in the process of redoing completely LATV, we have a new contract now, so that's going, that's going to get done.
It was voluntary.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening, staff. I just wanted to say is that thank you for you guys doing a great job in the city, all you civil servants, being awarded, you deserve it. My father was a 30-year civil servant for the city of Long Beach. He was the head engineer and, you know, seeing you guys get awards and stuff and you guys are doing a great job and I'm a civil servant's son. My father was a civil servant for 30 years and then he went on to build buildings after he was done with that, with the city of Long Beach. So I'm happy that you guys are doing a great job in the city, you're making, you're making good decisions in this city. And as far as the bike lane goes, I'm an avid cyclist and I rode down Los Allo Boulevard and I got in the green lane that my wife helped get approved and all this and I thought it was great because all the cars stayed away from me and I went right where I was going, no problem. I thought this, hey, this thing works, you know what I mean? So, you know, I'm a cyclist, I mean, I can go ride 100 miles, I'm an avid cyclist, I mean, that bike lane works good by the Gonal lumber that's painted green, my wife was involved with that, but you guys are a great city and thank you for all you guys do. Chet and you guys are all great. Thank you, thank you.
Any other public comment? Alright, we'll go ahead. Oh, sorry.
It's okay. So I just wanted to comment on one of the agenda items, so I see here that there's a review for the commission membership and so I think it's great to kind of revisit our processes sometimes and see if they're, you know, still relevant and applicable to today, but I just wanted, just to add a few, just my thoughts on that. You know, I'd like to keep it like an open process. When I went through the commissioner like application and had to get up here and like sell myself to you guys and so that you could, you know, you made a decision based on the applicants that were present at the time. So, you know, I just really hope that you do keep it open so that it's less restrictive, it's open to everybody, people who are genuinely interested and not, you know, I don't know if appointment, you know, discuss the preferred method of commission appointment, I don't know if that means like where there's actually an appointment, someone, you know, assigned, is assigned the role. But just keeping it open and not necessarily having city council members like appoint someone, just keep it, keep it the people who really, really care about the issue and want to participate and improve their town by serving on a commission, so that's my two cents on that, thank you.
And just to clarify on the appointments, we, we would never just appoint, we, we like the interview process, we want people that want to be on commissions. It was more of the makeup, do we go by districts or keep it at large and different things like that, so, yeah, that interview process, we, we value tremendously, so.
Thank you, this is very nerve-wracking, so apologize, I'm nervous. I'm new to this, I'm new to the city, I'm a new mom, so a lot of new stuff and I really want to get involved in my local community and my local government. So as some people have already mentioned, I did apply for one of the commissions as you extended the application. Did have a call today, I hadn't heard anything, I'm really eager to get started and get involved, so I just want to make sure that I got my face out here so you, you know, you'll see me more often and then look for my application. And I did see on the agenda that we were talking about taking it from seven to five on some of those seats and I'm just hoping that I'm not etched out if we do change that tonight, so that was my two cents.
What's your name?
Thank you for asking, Donisha Quiller.
Thank you. Welcome to Los Allo. Alright, anybody else? Rest of you are shy, okay. Updates from the mayor. Race on the Base, register now for the UWS Race on the Base. The event features a reverse sprint triathlon, 5K run walk at the Los Alamos Joint Force Training Base on March 1st. The reverse triathlon consists of a 5K run, a 13-mile bike ride and a 200-meter swim. Visit racsonthebaselosal.com. And then we have our Financial Partners Weekend of Art, calling all artists, the Los Allo Recreation and Community Services Department and Parks and Recreation and Cultural Arts Commission are excited to announce the return of the Financial Partners Weekend of Art in Los Alamos. Mark your calendars and don't miss this creative and exciting event on Friday, March 14th and Saturday, March 15th. Art applications are being accepted at cityoflosaludos.org. The event will take, will include an art exhibit for all ages, children's art activities, arts and crafts booths, live performances and an awards ceremony. And ever since we've started the Weekend of Art, it has grown into something really neat. I mean, we've got the little tiny babies with their artwork to some of our adult artists that probably should be at some museums. It's a really neat, just a weekend of just culture, so I'm planning on attending that. And then just a couple of things that I've been doing, we met the Budget Standing Committee, we finalized the budget calendar. the budget calendar. Last two weeks ago, I went to our new Orange County Supervisor, Janet Wynn, swearing in. She went from our state senator to our Board of Supervisors. There were over 700 people there. And she had the mayors of the first district lead the pledge. But yeah, there were a lot of people there. She has a ton of support. I attended the ACCOC board installation where we have Mayor Pro Tem Doby as the first vice president doing amazing things. And then we also did the grand opening of the Laurel Park Tennis and Pickleball Courts. And just a little PSA, pickleball is an extremely dangerous sport. It, you put your, leave a piece of your knee or elbow or face on the court. But no, it's, the courts are absolutely gorgeous. We have two tennis courts and two pickleball courts, and they are being used. And it's just, it's a beautiful place to go play under the lights and just get some physical activity. So that's all I have. And moving over to City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm actually going to ask Craig Covey to give us an update on OCFA and what exactly is going on with the fires right now. Chief?
Thank you, City Manager Simmons, Mayor and Honorable Counsel. City Manager asked me to kind of provide a quick update on what has been going on. I know there's a lot of questions out there, and how are we prepared for this? So let me start with, every year I got asked, every year, what, how's, how's it gonna look? How's our, how's the fire season gonna look? And I always answer with, depends on what's gonna happen first, the wind or the rain. If we get the rain, we're not gonna have a bad fire season. If we get the wind, then the potential is there, and you can see the potential. It's catastrophic when we have a start. So we were very fortunate in the starts that we had during that wind event. We had winds to 94 mile an hour during the wind event. We have one of the busiest, windiest canyons in Southern California up here just behind Orange. So the fires that we had, we had five. We had one, actually a six just the other day. We've held them off to under an acre. We have not been put into a position that a lily faced. We didn't have a fire start under the same conditions. We dodged a bullet. We were very lucky. Could be, can we have something like that occur? 100%. We lost 400 homes in Laguna Beach. We lost 200 homes in Yorba Linda. So that environment does exist here, but it's a very specific environment that creates that situation. Couple of council members have asked me about this. Takes fuel, weather, and topography to come in alignment to have a situation like that. Los Alamos will never experience the conditions that, that were faced in those environments. Think about Paradise on the Campfire. Think about Redding. Think about the Napa Firestorm, Lahaina in Hawaii. Very specific set of conditions that cause those events. That's not something you're gonna face here in Los Alamos. So one of the positives to the conversation here. We have a year-round fire season. This is it. This is one of them. Chief Finacy has always professed and backs his statement that the greatest threat to life and property loss in Orange County is wildfire. So OCFA, especially under his tenure, has really taken a huge step forward in being prepared and responding to wildfires. He's been on 60 Minutes. He's been on national television newscasts. He's been on podcasts like Glenn Beck. He's out there really championing the California response to wildfires. We sent nine strike teams to LA. That's 45 fire engines while we're having one of our own wind events. You know, we really stepped up and tried to help our, our neighbors to the north. We sent a helicopter, a dozer, a hand crew strike team, 10 damage inspectors that are helping with going out and cataloging all these damaged or destroyed structures so that the residents can get back in and begin their recoveries. Two arson investigators with ATF Task Force to help out with that. And then five members of our search and rescue team with two HRD canines, the canines that go out and locate people that have died. We have two different kind of canines. That's one of them. So we sent over 275 firefighters up there to support the LA fires. But we didn't leave our dirt uncovered. We went into what's called staffing emergency conditions. Basically, all days off canceled unless we don't have a seat to put you in. And every fire engine that had a pump or wheels that were working had firefighters on it. We backfilled. Every fire station was covered. In addition, we prepositioned with support from the California Office of Emergency Services, the governor's office, we prepositioned three strike teams of engines, two water tenders, a hand crew, two dozers, three helicopters, and 14 people for our Department Operations Center. It's another 125 firefighters prepositioned, ready to respond on top of our high watershed dispatch. So we normally have like 20, 24 units going to a watershed. When we get a red flag like we're right now, we're adding three strike teams and that whole list of equipment to go stomp on these things as fast as we can. One of the things that the chief is really passionate about is new technology. We also have a bunch of new technology with, there's cameras everywhere through our mountains now, and they have AI interfaces that work with the satellites that detect heat signatures. Twice this year, the cameras and the satellites detected fires before someone called 911, and we're able to respond out and suppress the fires. He's expanded our helicopter fleet. If you saw the two new Blackhawks, plus he has what's called a QRF, which is three tankers, hell tankers that are 3,000 gallon water dropping helicopters with a helicopter leader to respond and pound on these fires, hopefully on, get catch them on initial attack. And the last thing, we led the country in a new program called FIRES. It's an airborne intelligence program that provides real-time mapping of where the fire is going, and it's connected to a supercomputer down in San Diego that gives us modeling of where it's gonna go for the next three hours. So that guides me. Like I ran the, the airport fire. I was in charge of operations on that. I'm using that technology to inform me to make tactical decisions to fight the fire, as well as assist with PD on the evacuations. Where is this fire going, and who do we need to get out of harm's way? So that's hopefully not too long, too much of your time update on what we've done and what we're prepared to do in these current conditions.
Chief, I'm sorry, I don't want to get the acronym wrong, but you had a role to play currently, or recently with these fires as well, just here in Orange County.
Am I there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm the incident commander on one of our incident management teams, and we're prepositioned for response, like one of those fires, should it escape initial attack, for my team to come in and take over and manage the fire, similar to what we had this year with the airport fire.
Mayor, I just go on to state that, you know, obviously you can be impressed with, you know, what exactly has been going on with help coming from all different areas of the nation and even outside of the country to help with the fires in LA. But I, I always find it interesting that it's our fire chief that they put in charge when they think something might happen here. So we definitely have one of the best. With that, I'd actually like to ask Dr. Noda, he has a couple of updates as well.
Good evening, Mayor, again, and members of the city council. Yes, I have a couple items, updates. The first one I'm going to talk about is our upcoming Lexington Street striping project. This is a street striping project that is going from the entrance of the base to Cotella. It's a few blocks, but it's gonna change the striping there because where the plan will improve safety by creating a more orderly traffic flow by keeping vehicles within the lane lines, improving corner visibility at intersection and driveways, slowing down vehicle traffic, and creating an additional 26 parking spaces. There are currently just parallel parking. We're putting in diagonal parking in there, and it does increase its 26 parking spaces. Noticing will go out to the residents and the businesses around Lexington next week, beginning on Monday, the 27th, with actual work at the request of the Joint Forces Training Base to occur on two Saturdays. The two Saturdays will be February 1st and February 8th, and the work hours from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. So again, this is the Lexington Street striping project, and I want to reiterate that the Noticing will go out. I believe message boards are already out on Cotella notifying residents and, you know, vehicles of the upcoming project. The second one I want to announce is the Good Evening Los Alamos, which is scheduled for Tuesday, January 28th at the Community Center. It will begin at 6:30 PM. The theme of this year's Good Evening Los Alamos is milestones and destination, looking back and moving forward. We're going to recap some of the great accomplishments we have done the past few years. We have a big list, but I'm just gonna name a few. You know, we got the canine for the police department. We got the awards that you saw tonight that Finance has won for the past several years. We got all the great things that Recreation is doing, such as their adaptive programming and return to aquatics, and of course, all the CIP projects and economic development initiatives coming from Development Services. And the big one there is, we're talking about what's coming up for the plan. So it's, anyone in the community is invited to come. Again, it's 6:30 PM. And if you come, you also learn about what's coming up for the future of Los Alamos as we talk about what the plan is and stuff. And so again, if you have time, 6:30, the Community Center, and that address is 10911 Oak Street. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just have one more comment, actually relates to some of the public comment. The, the issues that we're having with the new turn system at Cerritos and Los Allo Boulevard, these are, it's a long process. This actually started back with the Active Transportation Plan that was approved back in 2021, I believe. And this is really about how exactly we as an organization really start planning for multi-way, multiple different ways for people to get from point A to point B. That being said, having driven out there, anytime you introduce something new after 30 years of it being the same, it's going to confuse people. I think that that's very clear. We did put some additional cones out today. We're talking about message boards and what exactly they can be used for. The police has been out there actually not ticketing, but actually advising people as to what exactly the rules are out there. And we are having some internal meetings about additional things that we might be able to add in terms of signage, additional ballards and such, in order just to make it clearer for everyone. I will say this though, too. We recently went through back in, I want to say 2022, 2023, a restriping of the Old Town neighborhood in order to slow down traffic. When those stripings went in, I think everybody had a very reasonable reaction, which was, what is this? I'm happy to report, you know, a couple of years later, that speeds within Old Town have dropped significantly. And that's not just hearsay. That's, you know, empirical data at this point. So using these tools in order to change traffic over time is an important thing, but I think the takeaway is, is that we can do more in order to notice it as to what exactly is our goal. And then also, we have to allow some time for it to actually take root within the community. Thank you.
Okay. Before we get on with our meeting, I'm sorry, I wanted to bring this up. Tonight, we're going to be closing in memory of two stellar people that have left a huge mark in our city. The first is Teresa Sharon. She passed away in December. She and her husband lived in the Highlands for a bit, and then they started, where they raised their six children, a true Catholic family. And then they decided to open their home to unwed mothers or women in crisis pregnancy. They served 44 women out of their home, and then decided to open up Precious Life Shelter, opened up in 1989. For the past 35 years, Precious Life was Teresa's pride and focus. It was grown into an extraordinary facility that will continue to serve women and children in the community for many years to come. In addition to her six children, she has 15 grandchildren and 22 great-grandchildren. So not only did she fulfill a purpose, she's left a legacy here in Los Alamos, and we can just go over to Precious Life and see what that legacy is. Her funeral was on January 10th. And then we also were deeply saddened by the sudden passing of our former police captain, Wayne Byerly. He was with the sheriffs for many, many years, did many positions of the sheriffs, including a canine officer, which I didn't realize. And then he came over to Los Allo, served here for three years as our police captain. And then two years ago, three years ago, two years ago.
Two years ago, yeah.
Went over and became the police chief at the city of Signal Hill. He was beloved. I just talked to the city clerk over at Signal Hill, and they just all absolutely adored him. He was putting some programs into place for the city of Signal Hill, and they instantly just fell in love with him. He passed away suddenly at the age of 58, and his funeral was this last week on January 13th. So please keep the Sharon family and the Byerly family in your prayers. Wayne left his wife and a 15-year-old son, and there's, there's gonna be a new normal for them. So if you could just keep both of these families in your prayer, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Now we're on to warrants. Per the council's accelerated warrant policy, questions will be noted by staff and followed up after the meeting. The accelerated warrant report was provided to council on Monday, January 13th, and no questions were received. Do we have any new questions for follow-up at a later date? Okay, with that, can I get a motion in a second?
I'll move it.
Sir.
And can I get a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Doby?
Aye.
Councilmember Hibbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Lowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Aye.
Okay, now we're moving on to consent, consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Does anybody from the DIAS want to pull an item?
Can I pull G?
I'd like to pull A and C.
Okay, let's just go in alphabetical order, and then we can just approve all of them at the end. Emily, item A.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, one of my votes was recorded incorrectly. I just want to point that out. We can get that corrected. Let's see. It's on page 54 of the, of the agenda packet. It has me voting in the affirmative, and I voted in, I voted no. So if we can, couldn't we get that fixed before we file that?
What meeting is that from?
This was for... Regarding the, this was at the December 16th meeting regarding the regular meeting before that dated. Sorry, thank you for your patience. The regular meeting, December 16th.
So Wendy, you have that?
Yes, we'll confirm with the recording, and if a correction is needed, we'll make it before filing.
Thank you. It's item 12A, if that helps.
Okay, and then item E, or item C, I'm sorry. The Police Officers Association.
Yeah, if I can get a staff report on that, Chief?
Sure. I'm gonna ask the chief to step in here. I will say, just from a global standpoint, staff has been looking at different ways in order to increase our reach in terms of recruiting and different avenues that we can take in order to attract different types of employees. And so with that, I'll hand it over to the chief.
Thank you. One second. All right, with this incentive program, what we found out with the issues that law enforcement has run into with recruitment and retention, is that the best recruiters for law enforcement officers typically tend to be law enforcement officers. So if somebody is happy and working in an organization, it's their word of mouth that they're sharing with others that is going to be the number one driving force to lead officers to leave the organization they're at, to find another that they would prefer to work at. So that being the case, we came up with the concept of having an incentive program to offer for our current employees that basically breaks down into three incremental payments for different, for different timing of the process of hiring a lateral police officer. So if they refer somebody who is currently an officer somewhere else and they lateral over, they would receive $3,000 at the time of initial hire, $3,000 if they complete their training, and another $3,000 when they're off of probation. And this is just an incentive that is in line with best practices of other organizations to try to find ways to drive recruitment and retention.
Can you, one of the things I was looking for particularly was the duration of time... Can you, one of the things I was looking for particularly was the duration of time that, that the officer would have to be, you know, stay with the PD. Is that, did I miss that? Or how long would they have to stay before that third thou, so it's $9,000 signing bonus for the recruiter, the, the officer?
Correct.
So how long would that officer need to stay?
So it does not have a length of time that the employee would have to stay for the recruiter to end up having to receive the bonus. If I could try to explain the lengthy process that it would take for somebody to have to go through to leave one organization, to then be employed by another, like that is a significant move to uproot their career and have that changed to another organization. And that is something that, to be quite honest with you, doesn't happen often. So therefore, to think that somebody would come to go to one organization so a friend of theirs could get a stipend and then end up uprooting their family and moving back after they received the stipend, I think would, would not be very reasonable to think that that would occur. Because nothing is coming back to the employee themselves. It's just to the person who is recruiting them.
To the recruit?
To our current employee.
Okay, and that's $9,000 if an officer recruits another officer?
Correct. So it's to promote our current employees to then go become recruiters to other officers to want to come work for us.
Okay. And I read that there, that we have a recruitment team. Is that correct?
We, we do. We'll have officers that are on recruitment teams so that if there are events, recruitment events, where we will send them out to go open up a booth, hand out flyers, hand out stickers to kids, do everything we can to try to encourage people. We don't have several vacancies at the, at the PD currently. There's only a couple of spots left currently, but staffing is something that is always a moving target. It fluctuates constantly.
And we're at 25 right now?
25 current funded positions, correct.
25. And is that recruitment team, are they volunteers or are they paid?
It's an ancillary duty that our current officers do.
And about how much does that cost us, like a year?
Oh, my goodness.
I'm trying to see the cost benefit. Like 9,000 is an awesome bonus for the person who's recruiting someone.
Correct.
So if we're paying a recruitment team, I'm trying to see where the...
So we're talking about people who are currently officers that work other assignments. So there's only a couple of events that we, a year that we would send people to that would have a couple hours of overtime for them to go to that event.
And that's a team?
So it's miniscule, correct.
Got it, okay.
Correct. Very small amount.
Okay, so it's more overtime or extra? It's not an actual team, but that's what they're doing?
Maybe a better, better way of wording it is as needed. And being that we don't have a lot of current vacancies, we have, over the last year, we have not sent them to several different events because of the lack of vacancies.
So councilmember, what might help just for a data point for yourself is, obviously, you can go out and hire recruiters. There's many that work within the public sector and specifically within public safety. A recruiter for a sergeant-level position, which is largely what laterals are at this point, would cost you someplace between 15 and $20,000. And that's without knowing what exactly the value that you got out of it. That's your initial upfront payment that you would give to a recruiter. So by keeping this money in-house, we essentially are hopefully exploding the number of recruiters that we have and hopefully saving ourselves 10 grand at the, at the same time. So just wanted to add that to the conversation.
Thank you, thank you. What, what would you say is the average salary for an officer? One of our officers?
I would have to look at the most recent flyer.
100 grand, 75?
No, it's over 100 grand.
Over 100. Okay, so the bonus is, is about 10%?
It's probably a little under that.
Little, okay, it's over.
Yeah.
And then is this for, are we focusing on, so we're at 25, and we're looking at 26. So is this for one more position?
So we currently have 25 funded, right? We're hopeful to get 26. We are currently at 23. We have one in backgrounds that should be hired. We hope will be. That's 24. So then we just would have one vacancy at that point.
That we're looking to apply these 9,000 bonus bonuses to?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I was just wondering if we do have signing bonuses for our police officers. If we do and if we don't, would that be something you consider? Or what are your thoughts on that?
So what I have found, and I was asked this actually by the POA, I am not a fan of those. Because if money is all we're going to get to recruit somebody to come over here, what value do, what expectation will we have of them to serve this community if they're only driven by money? So that's just my opinion.
Let's go ahead and vote on item C. I'm not worried about A. That was just a correction of the minutes. But can I go ahead and get a motion in a second on item C?
I'll move it.
Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item C passes. And the next one is G, Mayor Protem Doby.
This is actually just a quick question. Were we striping, it's Cotella bike lanes?
Actually, no, it's the lanes of travel, but I'm going to ask Dr. Noda to expand on that.
It's a good question, Mayor Protem. It's actually all the lanes. So Cotella is made up of three lanes heading in each direction. So we're striping all six lanes plus crosswalks from basically the 605 freeway all the way down to the city limits over in Cypress, which is approximately Walker Street.
Yeah, but not adding bike lanes?
No, not currently. Correct.
I've got a, oh, sorry.
I was just wondering, because Cypress owns the sixth lane on the north side, correct?
That is correct. Cypress has the jurisdiction of one lane on the Cypress side, so we are in talks with them to do a cost share.
And when it comes down to bike lanes and such, we'll be pursuing grant funding in order to hopefully take over the cost of that going forward.
For all the rest of the bike lanes?
Yes.
Councilmember Hibbert, do you have another question?
Thank you, yeah. So in the staff report, it says that this, that this is going to restripe Cotella from the 605 to, to Cypress, and it's only $131,000. And I don't usually say this, but it seems too cheap. I want to double, triple check that we, that this is from the 605 freeway to Cypress. And if we have a cost per linear foot, or how are we arriving at that 131,000?
So if you view the, again, that's a good question, councilmember. But if you look at the specs, you can see clearly that the specs is from the 605 freeway to approximately Walker, which is the boundary of Los Alamos and Cypress. So when we go out to official RFP and we notice this bid, you will see those specs. So that, that basically is kind of like the guide for people to bid on is the actual specs of it. The other part here is, again, it's an engineering estimate. And again, our engineering firm, Willdan, is a very big engineering company. They work with several cities, and they do these projects on a daily basis. So striping doesn't really go by linear feet. It just kind of goes by the scope of the project, how many crosswalks, what type of crosswalks you want, right? And so...
Like yellow versus white paint, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. Green paint is much more expensive than the white paint. There's different type of paint. There's regular paint, there's thermoplastic paint. You want a just straight crosswalk, or you want a ladder crosswalk. So again, the specs will drive that. And based on Willdan engineering experience, they come up with the engineering estimate, which you see right there. Yeah, sometimes, for the most part, we've been very, they've been very good, and we've actually have gotten bids that are below the engineering estimate. There's only maybe a 5% to 8%, 10% where it actually comes over the engineering estimate. But again, this is a RFP process. So at the end of the day, we come back to council. We're hoping that it comes under always. I have a saying, is we're under budget on time. And so again, but if it does go over, we'll take a look at that, and we'll make a recommendation whether we accept it or reject it. But then council has that ultimate decision.
Ballpark, do we ever have a cost per linear foot, or square foot, or, or, or per inch? I ask, so bear with me for a second. So I, I work in manufacturing, and we spread liquid ink or liquid adhesive over flat surfaces. And typically, in my industry, I can get a gallon of liquid to spread about 6,000 square inches. So as I'm looking at this, I'm looking for any sort of, any, something to connect the 131,000, which I think is too low, to the scope of the project. Do we, do we have anything that we use as an estimate?
If I ask the vendor, I'm sure they can. But again, it'll be a very, because like I said, there's, there's different type of paint. There's oil-based paint, there's regular paint, there's thermoplastic. And then again, it's a, it's a scope, you know? So it's like, what type of crosswalk do you want? What type of lane markings do you want? What's the thickness of the lane marking? But at the end of the day, we could say, hey, vendor, we want to do thermoplastic paint on crosswalks, ladder crosswalks. What is the linear, average linear cost, like you stated, per feet? I'm sure they can provide that to us.
Okay, for my curiosity, I, I would appreciate that. Also, it looks like we've got a small discrepancy. If I could direct your attention to page 135 of the packet.
Are we looking at the agenda report or one of the attachments?
Yeah, 135 of the, of the packet.
Okay.
Okay, so let's see. This is what appears to be what we're going to be sending out to, to go to bid. Under the, there's, you know, it says, "Join the meeting now." There's two bullet points. And then that first, that first paragraph under there, this, the, the city of Los Alamos proposes to...
Okay, so you're looking at, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the whole packet. I do it by, by report. So let me pull it up here. You're probably looking at one of the attachments?
Yeah, it's page 135 of the agenda, section A, page 3, if that helps, for notice inviting bid.
Okay, so that's the, um, let me pull it up real quick. Okay, so there's a very front, so the city of Los contract document is specs, and she said, notice the bidder. Can you state what you stated, councilmember?
Yeah, do you, do you see the page? I'm sorry, I, I don't know how better to direct you. It's 135 of the agenda packet. It's got, at the very top, notice inviting electric bid, electronic bids at the very top.
Okay.
Ron, I believe it's section A, page 3 of the attachment.
Thank you.
Section A, page 3. Okay, let me get there. Page 2. Okay, join the meeting now, yes?
Yes, thank you so much. Just underneath those two bullet points, you see that first paragraph?
The city of Los Alamos proposes to restripe?
Yes.
Yeah, from Los Al, oh.
It says, "The city of Los Alamos proposes to restripe the existing striping with paint on Cotella Avenue from Los Alamos Boulevard to Walker Street." I think this is why the price is too cheap, is if, if we're going out to bid based on Cotella, Los Alamos to Walker, that doesn't include the portion of street from the 605 to the, the Boulevard.
Okay, so I'm writing a note. I will talk to our engineering team about this.
Okay, I, I'm not sure if I can get one of my colleagues to agree, but is it possible to pull this tonight since we don't know? Are we voting on restriping? I think we all agree we need to restripe this street. But are we, are we doing it from the 605 to Cypress or from the Boulevard to Cypress?
I think it decides on if it's an error that was just in how this was typed up, or if it was an error at its inception, and that's what Willdan is basing their quote on.
Yeah, so again, you know, everything is on the exhibits. So the exhibit is a schematic drawings. And so...
Could you direct my attention to what page? I, I saw the schematics. I didn't see any schematics for the area of Cotella from the 605 to Cotella Boulevard, excuse me, Los Al Boulevard.
Okay.
Maybe I missed that.
Like you stated, councilmember, I will rectify this and talk to our engineering team. But my direction to the engineering team is 605 freeway to Walker Street. And so we will go back and, to answer your question, if that's not correct, we can pull this, and we will bring it back at a, another council meeting. But at the end of the day, the striping will be from 605 to Walker. So...
Do we have a schematic for the 605 to the Boulevard?
Me...
I'm, I'm trying to determine, is it just, you know, discrepancy, or, or do we have our costing off?
All right, so it's the other attachment. Let me pull it up. Let me check it out. Okay, so it's the first attachment, which it says here, item G, and it says here, "Striping improvement on Cotella Avenue plans." So let's check it out here.
Do you have what page that is on our, on our packet? Thank you.
Yeah, I don't...
Okay, thank you. 123.
So councilmember, unfortunately, it looks like you are correct. I don't see the 605 freeway to Los Al Boulevard.
Counsel, if it's okay, I'd actually like to pull this item since I can't find the, the same document as well. And we can bring it back to you guys in February for approval. I don't think at this time it's going to slow down the project significantly. We will miss some advertising time, but at the same time, it allows us to make sure that the engineering estimate's correct.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Okay, and with that, can I go ahead and get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move it.
Minus G?
Minus, yes, minus G, and we already voted on.
C.
C, yes.
Yes, you got a motion on second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I seem to abstain from the, I guess, the minutes, right, for the first three minutes, but not the fourth?
Oh.
On the approval of the minutes?
You can if you'd like.
I mean, if I wasn't here, right?
So you're approving the minutes, you're just stating that you have knowledge of what happened at the meeting and the, the agenda? It's totally your preference if you prefer to abstain or not?
Yeah, gotcha. I'll do that for the first three then.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, now we're moving on to item 11A. Excuse me, this is the ordinance 2025-01, e-conventions relating to vehicles such as e-bikes.
Can I hand this one over to the chief?
Yes. So in relation to the Orange County Grand Jury Report, we were mandated to provide e-bike safety training courses, which we did. And the second part was to expand on the municipal codes for enforcement to improve the safety of these e-bikes in municipal cities and the county area around Orange County. And we have brought this back to the council for approval of additional municipal codes that we would like to add for future enforcement.
Does council have any questions?
I've got a question. So I read through the list of the different ordinances, and my question is on the sidewalk speed for the e-bikes.
Okay. We actually, I am going to have Captain Gallagher address that himself.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Do I need to iterate? Okay. So reading through, and, and I understand that, because I did, I did do some research upfront. And so the 28 miles per hour is how fast the bikes go, but on a sidewalk? So my question is, what, if anything, is within the realm of possibility to limit, restrict, or just no e-bikes on the sidewalk? Because 28 miles per hour is, I don't, I think we can all see what would happen to 13, 14, 15-year-old boiling down the street and someone just not paying attention. So is there anything that can be added for that? Or what are you seeing out and about? Are we the first person to take notice of that? Like, what you got for me?
No, ma'am. So in, in the municipal code that was created, it goes over several different portions of when these bikes are being operated on the sidewalk. It does reference the 28 mile per hour, however, that is a class 3 e-bike. And in there, it also states that class 3 e-bikes are not permitted on the sidewalk. It regulates the speed at which somebody travels on an e-bike on the sidewalk in a manner of a speed at which be safe for the prevailing conditions, which is very similar to the vehicle code and vehicles traveling on a roadway. And a lot of that is determined based on the conditions in which the sidewalk would be when somebody's riding an e-bike on the sidewalk. For instance, if a child were to be riding an e-bike on the sidewalk while pulling a wheelie, or if they're going 12, 13, 14 miles per hour while the sidewalk is wet, and they wouldn't be able to stop very quickly if somebody were to come in front of them. Any of those prevailing conditions... Any of those prevailing conditions, as an officer observes, feels that they could be unsafe, that would be a violation of this municipal code.
So we still can't set a speed on the sidewalk? Is that not within our purview? Or can't enforce it, or?
We can enforce speed on the sidewalk, but the officer would have to determine that the speed at which that operator is traveling is unsafe, based on the conditions.
I think, I guess I'm thinking more neighborhood watch style, right? Like it takes a village, so if another adult sees someone on a bike and you can kind of eyeball, you're not going regular bike speed. It's like, hey, simmer down, friend, or something. Because we have to help each other out with this, like, people's children are on these bikes, and I don't want to take anyone's fun, but there has to be some wisdom exercised, and their frontal lobes have not quite arrived there yet, so that's on us, as the adult. So I'm looking for something, whether it be signage, whether it be pushed out on social medias, whether it be added to the classes, something that really drives home the fact that you can only be going so fast if you're on the sidewalk on an e-bike.
Some of the difficulty, if we were to put a specific number in there, would be that these, most of these e-bikes are not equipped with a speedometer. So it'd be very difficult to say, you can't go over 15 miles per hour, 10 miles per hour on an e-bike when the child has no way to determine what speed they're actually going.
Nor would we have the ability, because our expectation of having an officer sit there with a radar gun and shoot radar for an e-bike would be unrealistic.
Well, based on that, then shouldn't we just say, "No e-bikes on sidewalks"?
But the California Vehicle Code says that they can be.
And we can narrow that down with our city ordinance? Just because we're asking these kids to use common sense?
Correct, and that's why we have the ability to say that in prevailing conditions, because there are some sidewalks we can find that are in wide open spaces that have a class-two bike we're going 20 miles an hour on. There's no condition that inherently in and of itself would make that unsafe. But the minute somebody is in the roadway or on the sidewalk or in the area, that would then make that unsafe. And so they have the ability to determine whether it is anything in the conditions, whether it's fog and they can't see, well, that's an unsafe speed. There's a pedestrian, there's somebody walking a dog. Any of these would make it unsafe for those conditions where they would be able to cite.
Which, I'm thinking even just going down far, far, I mean, an e-bike at 10 miles an hour on a sidewalk with the amount of, people don't have backyards.
And they would get cited. And they could get cited. If the officer can articulate why they think that speed is unsafe for those conditions, they get cited. I don't need to put a speed. It could be five miles an hour. That's unsafe. I'm going to cite you.
And do we have some sort of e-bike traffic school that these kids can go to?
So we currently don't. There is a city that is doing a trial where they are citing and then having an alternative to paying a fine, but they're mandating the parent has to go with them to sit through the class. Now, that is currently in a trial by another city, and it does bring costs with it that the city would then have to eat to offer those courses in addition to what we already currently offer, which the parents are not mandated to attend.
But is there an opportunity without it being reactive, like preemptive?
In what way?
Soon as you get, or do they, you don't have to register, you don't have to have a license of any kind?
Nope, it's a bicycle, it's a bicycle.
So it was something that, what is it, middle schools, not really to high schools, those babies drive? But at the middle schools where they have to get something to take the bike on campus? Could it be something that was added to that, since you've already got them?
Add what to it?
In, like, something that says, "Keep your bike off of the sidewalk."
But the California Vehicle Code says that they can.
Nobody on it ever unless it's, you know, 2 o'clock in the morning, and then the baby should be in the bed anyway. I'm trying to stop a problem that I can, I have my mother hat on. I don't have any other hat on right now. I've got my mama hat on, and I'm just trying to think, how can we keep the children? Because ultimately, it's them. How do we keep them safe from themselves? And if it's just, hey, you gotta let them bump their heads?
So we currently have kids doing wheelies down the wrong side of the roadway. Do we think that making a 10 mile an hour speed limit on the sidewalk is probably an unrealistic expectation that they're going to do that? Whereas we have the ability to cite them for anything that the officer sees that is unsafe. Any unsafe condition, whether it be speed, whether it be wheelies, whether it be riding five on a bike. Things that we can't even imagine they're going to do two years from now. As long as we have verbiage in here that says it is unsafe at the discretion of the officer, and they can articulate that, and they would have to show just cause to do that, then it gives them the ability to cite. In my opinion, adding a 10 mile an hour speed limit to a guy who's doing a wheelie on the wrong side of the roadway isn't going to change anything.
You know, on the flip side, my son has an e-bike. I don't want him riding on Los Alamos Boulevard, you know, leaving Target or Chipotle, coming back home. I want him on the sidewalk, on that street.
Because of the prevailing speed of the surrounding vehicles, correct? And if there are no pedestrians on that sidewalk, he can do that in a safe manner. But if there are conditions that exist that would make that unsafe, such as an elderly person, somebody in a wheelchair, somebody walking their dog, then he would hit the roadway, go around, and come back on. Now, once we get these in place, these will all then become part of the course that we teach at the junior high school. Explaining to them what unsafe conditions are. So we will be incorporating that into the course. It's just not being done with a speed limit that nobody can enforce, because they don't know how fast they're going, and we're not going to have a radar to shoot to know how fast they're going at that time.
How frequently will these be edited, audited, added to?
So every kid has to, are you talking about the safety course or are you talking about the municipal codes?
I'm talking about these codes.
As needed. So that's why we create verbiage such as this, so we don't have to come back to you every six months when we see a kid doing something new we've never seen them doing before. Unsafe manner is going to apply. And so we will then incorporate the education of these municipal codes into the junior high school courses, which they're required to attend every two years to receive the sticker which will be placed on their bike.
Is there a special tab for just this information, like on our website? Do we have that where it's just e-bike?
I think if approved tonight, we're going to be a couple different things. There'll be obviously a social media that comes out of this, but also a newsletter that goes out with the Los Al... Loop, also our email blast. But also, we have a meeting that's coming up with the school district to talk about how also to push this out through. At the end of the day, that's where all the kids are, and so they have the most, I think, direct contact. And so, using them as a tool to push all this information out, I think makes good sense.
I still want a tab on our website.
That's fair.
I can make sure that Sergeant Gallagher is on top of that.
Sorry, not sorry.
I'm on it.
Questions or comments from the Dais?
I've got a, oh, sorry, go ahead.
The question I have is when you're citing a 13-year-old or 14-year-old, say they don't have an ID, and if it's the kid who's going the wrong way doing a wheelie, how do you know it's him? I mean, what do we do to these kids? Do we impound the bike? Do we call mom on the spot?
There are several different ways that we'll go about getting a positive ID on somebody who doesn't actually have an ID. And sometimes that's through the resources of contacting the school. Or generally, whenever we contact somebody that's a minor, especially if they're being detained for any kind of a municipal code or vehicle code, we're going to reach out to try to contact either a parent or a responsible guardian.
Councilmember, Heather?
Yeah, thank you. Tanya had her mom hat on. I want to put my money hat on. These, I'm looking at first fine $100, second fine $200, third fine $500, with, you know, certain details that go along with that. With... So our red light cameras, we pay the third party, we pay the attorney if the ticket is challenged to go down to the court. We pay staff to go down to the court as well. For a ticket of $100, what's that going to cost us? Or what's that process looking like? Is that something that will involve the county? The court system for the $100?
No, so instead of citing through the court system, these would be administrative citations. So those citations would stay in-house.
And so there was a methodology behind that as well. One, you don't have a third party like the county taking more money out of the fine. And two, I mean, I'm sure we've all may have experienced or known somebody who has a child who does not want to listen or follow the rules. He's not driving up the points on a potential license that he may get one day, and these aren't going on his official record. These are admin sites that will be kept within the city.
And let's say someone doesn't want to pay on the, for the minors?
They would go to collections.
Oh, they would, okay. Have we dealt with that yet, or are we citing?
It's not in place yet. That's why we're bringing this for you, not yet.
Okay, so if it would go to collections, do we have something in here, maybe I missed it? Collections, because that's going to cost the city something. What is that looking like? What's the financial burden that we should?
We're paying for the portion that is collected. They get a portion of what is collected from the person who hasn't paid.
And do we have anything like that set up or bids? Or do we know about how much that might, I'm looking at the, let's just say the $100 ticket. On the backend, what's that ultimately costing us? Because if it costs us $200...
So they are going to take a portion of the money that has not been paid. We're not paying them to do anything unless they get their funds back.
So I'm assuming someone at PD is going to look at, you know, something and say, "This didn't get collected." So we've got to pay that person.
A current employee would process it like a citation, just like we would the ones that go to the court. So we're already doing that anyways. This is just a different stack that gets added to the pile of an admin site versus a traffic citation that's going to go to the county.
It's similar to our parking citations. If somebody doesn't pay a parking citation, we have a policy in place that would allow that to go to collections, which gets based off of a percentage or a fine. So it doesn't actually ever cost us more than the actual collected violation itself.
Mm-hmm, okay. I'd be curious to see reporting, once we do, I think everyone, you know, agrees this needs to go in, but to see what that costs, what that, you know, is going to start costing us once we do start citing minors or we have minors, adults.
I'm not sure where you think the cost is going to come from. I haven't mentioned anything that's going to cost us anything.
Administrative costs. I was thinking the red light cameras, right? So you get a ticket for, let's say, $500, but the city?
Because we have a third-party vendor who's heavily involved in the process. They provide the equipment, they process the initial citation, they're doing a lot of work. We don't have anyone here doing...
So there's backend fees. I think we, what, net $100 out of the $400 or $500 ticket?
Whereas we don't have any of that here. It's all processed in-house. So we're getting the citations. They send the money in to collect, we're done. They don't send the money in, I send that to collections, collections goes and gets 75 of the $100. Maybe they take 25, we end up getting 50 back. It just affects the revenue we bring in. It does not affect any outgoing, more going out.
Thank you.
I have one more question. 1045-120C. I don't know if I missed it or not, the definition of business district. So you can't be on the sidewalk within a business district?
So that would be like a retail area, where you would, these are all listed as areas where we would expect a higher pedestrian traffic. Churches when they're in session, business district, and I believe it lists another.
Yeah, that section is actually specific also to, it must not just be in a business district, but it's also a business district adjacent to a public school, a recreation center, or a church. And all of those have to be either while churches or schools in session or churches in service. It has to be like an occupied, active area.
No, I'm just trying to figure out. I know it's not in Los Al... it's in Seal Beach, but I keep going back to it because I see most of the kids there. So, you're on Los Alamos Boulevard, and as soon as you want to go to Sprouts, do you have to get off your bike on the sidewalk on Los Al... and then walk to Sprouts? Or can you be on the street still? You can be on the street, get to Sprouts, you just can't be on the sidewalk between Sprouts and Marshalls?
You can, because there is not a church, school, or recreation center there.
Those aren't separated? So it says, "Business district upon sidewalks adjacent to any public school building." I don't think those three are tied together, right? They're separate?
Yeah, by my reading of it, business district is a standalone prohibition, and then it's sidewalks adjacent to any public school building when school is in session, a recreation center when in use, or a church during service, or other pedestrian over crossing, and so forth.
Okay, so it's just a, okay, I got it.
Another question, sorry. If a Los Al minor rides to Target and Seal Beach tickets him, cites him, does Seal Beach have similar ordinance?
Every city in the county was given the same mandate, so I have no doubt they've done something. What they've done, we don't know.
If they were cited, who would get the $100?
If they're cited in their city, it's by geography, they would.
Side, Seal Beach?
Yeah, wherever the citation, and that's no different than if it were a traffic citation or an admin site. All done by geography. Now, does that mean that we could not see a violation in our city but not get to the violator until they're in Seal Beach? They're still ours. The violation occurred in our city.
That $100, chief.
Any other questions? All right, city attorney, can you read the title of the ordinance?
Sure, thank you. Before you, this evening for introduction is ordinance number 2025-01, entitled, "In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, adding chapter 10.45 to Title 10 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code relating to vehicles such as e-bikes."
Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll move it, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On to B, ordinance 2025-02, informal bidding, Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Noda, but just wanted to mention that this is actually coming out of the passage of Measure X, which was approved by the voters this last election cycle. And what it does is it largely takes what the voters have approved and then put it into a framework that allows us to monitor the purchasing of Public Works projects and then also showing that we will be consistent with the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. But with that, Mr. Noda.
Thank you. Like the city manager Simmons said, this item recommends adoption of an ordinance establishing informal bidding process and procedures specifically for public works involving expenditures at or below $125,000 due to the City of Los Alamos Measure X that was approved by the majority of voters at this past election. We raised, the voters raised the procurement amount from $10,000, which was established and set in 1966, to, again, I stated, $125,000. Basically, in layman's term, because we've always have done this practice in terms of the informal bidding process, where we go out there and obtain three quotes for the project versus an official RFP. Again, it's just raising a threshold, and we're also codifying this into our, you know, language to state that we are going to do this and follow the procedures, which again, I stated, is doing the informal bidding process rather than the RFP. If anyone's asking why informal versus an RFP, for us to go through an RFP process, it'll take anywhere between six to eight months to come and get the, like, the work to actually begin. And so, by doing the informal process, we could cut that down tremendously from possibly one to two months, to, again, to get the vendor out here to actually do the work. Like the city manager stated, the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, we also call it KUPCA. Basically, I'm going to say here, the act establishes, the big one here is a public works project of $220,000. But again, our own city code or ordinance states that it's 125, so we're not actually following the code at 220. We're going down to what our voters of our residents has voted for, which is 125. So I wanted to point that out. And the last thing I want to point out here is sometime as we go through the process, right? And we say, hey, again, an estimate, and say, what do you think is the cost of this? And we think, oh, it's going to be, I'm just using example, let's say it's $110,000, all right? So we go through the process of going out there and obtaining the three quotes. There is a chance, though, that sometimes our estimate is low, and so they come back and say it's at 127, all right? According to our old way, if it's anything above the 125, we have to go out to RFP. So basically, we have to start from scratch and then, again, go through that process, which again, states, takes anywhere between six to eight months. There's a provision in here that if we receive bids at 5% at 125, so again, it's like 127, for instance, we can come back to council with the three quotes, with the lowest one being at 127, but it does require a supermajority vote of four-fifths of council to proceed without going to RFP. Again, if council decides at that time, no, Ron, we would like Development Services to go out there and do the official RFP process, we will certainly do that. But again, it just gives us that 5% leeway to, again, get projects done in a timely fashion here. Basically, again, this is a first reading, and if approved, this will make a project in the Public Works Division or the Engineering Division, which is in charge of the CIP project, capital improvement project, in a more timely manner. And again, that concludes my report. I'm here for any questions. And, um, again, um, that concludes my report, I'm here for any questions.
So Ron, this would, um, if you use the example that we had a few months ago with the gas leak in the police department, and the steps we had to go through to get that repaired, and with this in place, we can alleviate those steps to get it repaired because time is of the essence. And it, it would bring down repairs for months because the RFP process down to get it fixed.
Correct, um, I do wanna add to, to the answer, Mayor, you are correct. They will, um, make the timeliness of, again, starting a project much more, um, faster. But, uh, I just wanna point out that, uh, that we still have the emergency provision, right, and stuff? So, uh, but emergency provision, again, let's say there's an emergency that falls outside the one twenty-five, we can still come to council to, again, just like we did with the gas. But again, let's say that gas leak example that you brought up was under the one twenty-five, so then we don't have to coordinate with council, the call a special meeting, we could then just proceed. And again, um, you know, as you know, it takes a couple weeks to get poll council, to bring in a, a special council meeting. It just saves time for us at the end of the day.
Any questions from the dais?
I have a quick question. How, with this, since it's not coming to council, how would we then communicate to the public so that the public knows what we're spending their money on?
I'm gonna ask our finance director to assist me if I'm wrong. But, uh, again, um, we have to follow process here, which is involving purchase orders and all that. And again, we still have, uh, guidelines that we have. So anything above eighty-five thousand, we have to alert the budget standing, the city manager will alert the budget standing. So all that's still in effect, and at the end of the day, it shows up on our warrant registry that we're proceeding and spending this money.
So just after the money is spent, it shows up on the warrant? How do we let them know of the new contract?
It would also be part of the budget process itself. We, we can't spend money that the council hasn't already allocated. So that would be the appropriate time to let the public know what exactly is in the budget.
Any other questions? All right, city attorney, can you please read the ordinance title, please?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, the ordinance before you this evening is ordinance number twenty-two-five dash zero-two, entitled In Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamitos, California, adding chapter two point six-two to the Los Alamitos Municipal Code.
Can I get a motion and a second, please?
Move it, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. And our last ordinance, um, ordinance twenty-two. So our third one, uh, ordinance twenty-two-five dash oh-three, lobbyist registration and reporting. Can you get a staff report, please?
I think this one's gonna be the city clerk.
So similar to the ordinance that we just did, this also comes from Measure X approval. Uh, the proposed ordinance would codify lobbyist registration and reporting policies, procedures, and regulations to implement the voter-approved section five oh-five of the city charter. Uh, the proposed order, I'm sorry, the proposed ordinance would add chapter two point five-eight, and it's regulating people who are paid or compensated by others to attempt to influence official city actions. Any questions?
Questions from anybody? Okay, city attorney, can you read the ordinance title, please?
Thank you, Mayor, this is ordinance twenty-two-five dash zero-three, which is entitled In Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamitos, California, adding chapter two point five-eight to the Los Alamitos Municipal Code.
Can I get a motion and a second, please?
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, our last ordinance, um, ordinance twenty-two-five dash oh-four, commission membership. Uh, the city of Los Alamitos has four commissions, considering Parks, Recreation, Cultural Arts, Personal Appeals, Planning and Traffic. Excluding the Personal Appeals Commission, these commissions consist of seven members. This item proposes reducing the membership to five, consistent with the makeup of the city council and Personal Appeals Commission, and...
Uh, I believe this is also gonna be the madam clerk, or maybe not with that look. So, uh, um, anyway, I, I will say this, this item goes back to the formation of districts that the council undertook in twenty-twenty. At the time, there was questions about whether or not the auxiliary boards, meaning the planning commission, the parks and rec commission, uh, should, and the traffic commission, should follow that model of going to a five-member districted council. Through conversations throughout the years, there's been a, I'll say, a general consensus that, uh, the council did not want to appoint by district, uh, simply because it might limit, you know, if there's two or three people within a district that want to volunteer, that it might actually hinder that. That being said, we have experienced a number of different places where, um, and I'll say, not in, I don't think in planning, I don't think in traffic, but definitely within, uh, the rec department, where we've had issues with ensuring that we're going to have quorums. Obviously, if you have a seven-member board, then you have a quorum of four. If you have a five-member, uh, board, then you have a quorum of three. And so it just became a question of whether or not this is an item that the council would like to address at this issue, given that we're now starting over a term of, uh, appointing commissioners and such. So it became a prudent time to bring it up for you to consider and take a, a formal action on. I will say this also from just the standpoint of, um, what exactly is happening on the ground. Uh, we do have a number of applications that we've received. We have extended that period of time in order to get more applicants involved. I don't know at this point if we have a name for every slot, no. I would also remind the council that this year, there will be a number of different planning initiatives that are gonna take place. Potentially some specific plans, potentially the initiating of a general plan, depending on the pleasure of the council, uh, which only should open the opportunity for more people to become involved and to participate in the different processes at the city. Maybe not as part of a, um, a traditional committee, but definitely as one of a, an ad hoc committee of such. But, and with that, uh, this is the very definition of a policy decision, so I'm, uh, more than happy to step away.
I know in, in my tenure here, we've never had, um, applications for any of the commissions. So there's many times where we just leave the seat open, um, because we just didn't have an applicant. I'm sure Councilor Delo can speak on that. I do remember when we moved them from five to seven, and it was exactly because of that quorum, um, issue. They wanted to move to seven because they felt it was easier to find a quorum of four than a quorum of three with only five members. But that was, that was really the justification that they, that came with their request to move it to seven. So, um, I'll open up to any questions or discussion here, and I'm gonna look to my right.
Okay.
As seventeen years.
So I have my opinions on this. So I think in general, um, I've enjoyed having seven planning commissioners and being on the commission with seven planning commissioners. So I, I, I've liked that for, it, it adds a lot of diversity to the conversation. It, um, um, it gives more, more points of view on the planning commission. I think it also helps out staff sometimes, because we can find things and find things that maybe staff had missed and that, um, that I think they're appreciative, because all of a sudden, that won't come back to them a year later or something like that, or sometime in the future. So I can't speak to all the, all the commissions, I'll just speak to the planning commission, you know, as far as, uh, that goes. One of the questions I've had, or something that came up, was, uh, if we only have, say, five appointed commissioners on a, on a, on a commission that holds seven, but we only have five active, does that change the quorum? Does that change the quorum still to four, if we only have five people? Or does the quorum become three, based on the fact that we only have five appointed people? I'm just curious.
Or could we make the ordinance where it's up to seven? So if we only get five?
Right.
We don't have to leave two seats open?
And not have it impact the overall quorum number?
Right.
Yeah.
So, so the quorum, you know, depends on the meeting for purposes of calling the meeting. So if you only have five seats filled at a time, you would be looking at a quorum of three, notwithstanding the fact that the code may say there should be seven members, if that makes sense. Where it potentially becomes a problem is you do have votes occasionally that require, you know, like a majority of total membership of a body, and at that point, it doesn't matter what the quorum is. You'd say, okay, it's a seven-member body, who do we need here to vote?
So is that something that we could make it up to seven, but then even more?
Right.
We have applicants, we interview, and we have five. Can that become the commission for that period of time? I think in private, that's, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I, I'm sure, so the, the code amendment before you this evening is not situated that way, obviously. So we would need to bring it back if there's gonna be some substantive revisions to what's being proposed here. But I, I'm sure there's a way you could do that, that could say, you know, a membership ranging from five to seven as determined by resolution of the city council, something like that, that you could make it very clear that the council has the ability to decide for that term of the planning commission, what the composition will look like in terms of numbers.
Yeah, I just don't think it looks good when we have two open seats for a year or two. And then if you do need a quorum for the entire membership, that dramatically changes who needs to be there.
So I'm a fan of five. I was on Parks and Recs, uh, not as long as you were on, on yours. But what I'm more interested in is, um, how do we get people off of these commissions if they ain't showing up? Because that was an issue that I had when I was on a commission. I can, I actually can remember the person's name, but I'm not gonna share it. And I think that there was some stipulation that they had to miss, like, three meetings in a row? And he always managed to come back right before his third time. So then they just drug it out, and we were unable to get him, I mean, he was on standing committees, like, the whole nine. So I'm less interested in how many people are up here, because I think it should be five. If you can't get three here, then how do I cycle you out so that they can conduct the business of whatever their commission is? That, that's where I'm at. Because I think if you get into, well, we can leave room to go to seven, room to go to five, then it might look a little funky for us, like, we are choosing when we want more people, and then we're choosing when we want less people. And I think that leaves a margin for misunderstanding of why would we do that.
So madam clerk, uh, just point of clarification, I believe all of the appointees serve at the pleasure of the council.
Correct.
So the council can, in fact, remove a member that failed, well, for any grounds, quite frankly.
I'd have to double-check the code for that. But what Mayor Protimdelby was referring to is there is a provision, if you miss three consecutive meetings or a third of the meetings for the year, that you are automatically removed.
I'm more interested in changing that. Because if you know that, oh, I'm coming up on my third one, I better skate in there, come late. But I, we saw it all with this person, right? I would rather get them out so that I can get someone that wants to be present, that wants to help in the conduction of business.
The challenge, I think, that we have in Los Allen, we're not unique in this way at all, being a small city, is civic engagement here in Los Alamitos is low. And so to get, we're talking about a quorum, we need the quorum. If someone doesn't come to the meetings, do, do we wanna risk losing a quorum? And the administrative lift that would, that would accompany that?
Well, if they're not, if they're not at the meetings, they're not part of the quorum. So that actually hurts us if they're not showing up to meetings, because we're depending on them to be part of the quorum.
We can go and basically take that, I'll call it the three-meeting rule, and essentially look for different variations out there that kind of speak to what you're getting to, which is, if you're not gonna do the work, we don't need you to be here, I think, is what I'm hearing. That, I think, we can definitely work into an ordinance format in order to make that more stringent. And I guess, and maybe a reporting function with regards to each of my directors that actually oversee one of the various boards, they can report to me what exactly the attendance is. And if we see that there is an issue with, I'll, I can report that to the city council, or actually, maybe I just make it part of a formal reporting with the weekly, each week. And then that way, you guys are well abreast of who's coming to meetings, who's not going to meetings, and the people that you appoint, uh, you're able to hold them accountable as to whether or not they're doing what you guys have asked them to do.
Well, I just don't, we appoint them, which is just the word that we use, because you come and you interview before us, so when we pick you, you are appointed. I don't want it to have to be on staff to dismiss them.
Right.
It needs to come to us so that it's like, okay, you haven't been here, thank you for your service, we're going to replace you. That should be something that comes.
Definitely.
Whoever appoint, I don't want it to land on, and our staff is so kind that we don't actually hear about stuff unless we see it in action. So I'd like a mechanism that is, I'm not looking at anybody, that makes it unavoidable. We know what's happening, that we can be.
I think a reporting function from me to you as a board, um, can provide you that, so that you're informed about who's coming to meetings and who isn't.
So can we wanna pull this for the, uh?
Is that what I just did? I didn't need to do that.
No, 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 I think, I think, uh, checked it for.
If you, if you would like me to, uh, Madam Mayor, I can pull this and actually work back some additional rules and then bring it back to the council. However, question that I think obviously starts all of this is where exactly the board stands with regards to the makeup of the council in terms of numbers?
Oh, I'm a fan of five, I thought I made that clear.
I'm in favor of the five to.
Me as well.
Council.
If, if I could just offer a quick point of clarification, I was able to look quickly at our code. It is chapter two point three zero, governing the commissions generally. And so we have a rule there that if you miss three meetings, it's an automatic removal. So, so there's no procedure whatsoever, you would be removed from that body.
Is that in a row, or three, three for the year?
Um, let me see, because it's expressed also as a, as a percentage of the total meetings of the year. So absence from three consecutive meetings, or from one-third of the total of the regularly scheduled meetings during any calendar year. So it's, it's either, you know, consecutively or accumulative, uh, amount of absences. So that's, that's one section. And then alternatively, there's a section that just simply reiterates that all of these members serve at the pleasure of the council, so the council, at any time with or without cause, can take action to remove. So, um, you wouldn't be, I think, I think you're all aware of this, but you're certainly not limited to someone missing meetings as a grounds for removing them. You can remove them from that position for any reason, as long as you have a majority of the council who agrees that it's time to remove that appointment and put something, someone else in place.
Okay, so I think the, from the dais here, the commissioners are, I think the majority is in favor of five on every commission?
Jordan didn't say anything.
Are we having an issue with any commissions on commissioners missing three or a third of their meetings? Are we having an issue with that now, or we have in the past?
We have in the past, and, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna call out any commissioner by name, but, um, what I can do is take a look back and see what exactly the attendance looks like at some of the meetings, but going backwards.
So are we, um?
I'm in favor of five.
Yeah.
George is being real quiet.
No, I'm in favor of five. I think we could proceed on this, and then any other, um, administrative, if we want to.
Right, because what I was thinking is, you know, we've been, we've been stalling on interviews, and we wanna get our newest resident on a commission, and, um, she's, she's voluntold herself. So we'd love to get her on a commission, so I don't wanna keep extending this. Is there any way, we have a special meeting on February third, is there any way we can bring it back then so we can start, rather than waiting till the end of February for a regular meeting?
Well, if, if the council's in agreement tonight, uh, or at least a majority of the councils are in agreement tonight, you can, you can pass the ordinance as is. And then what I can do is go back and work with the city clerk and the city attorney about the best way to introduce some of those new rules. Thinking that one of the places might be the handbook for the commissioners, uh, as a, as a good vehicle to get everyone to the finish line. And also, the nice thing there is that it does set expectations for our commissioners going forward, that this is the bar that we, or more aptly, that the council has set, and these are the expectations.
So the ordinance would be the thirty-five thousand for.
Exactly, exactly.
The expectations.
Exactly, yes.
It sounds like this has been discussed before, but, um, it sounds like, uh, the council's in favor of kind of a, so random commissioners, they don't have to be from any specific district. Okay.
We would like a representation, but I know in my district, nobody's involved.
Same here.
No, don't do that.
One is involved on one commission, I'm so sorry.
I wouldn't let her do that.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, but, you know, and sometimes that, that hurts, you know, uh, when we're not getting representation on some of the planning projects and everything else, so, um, but I also know that we need to take people that are interested in doing it. So, um, I would just, you know, assume that the people that are applying, regardless of where they live, have the best interest of the entire city, uh, rather than just their own neighborhood, so.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah. I'd be good for that. So, um... So, okay, so with that, city attorney, can you read the ordinance title?
Yes, thank you, mayor. This is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero four, entitled "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Establishing a Five-Person Membership for City Commissions and Boards."
Can I get a motion and a second, please?
I'll move it.
I'm sorry, madam mayor, if you mind, if I can just clarify the motion that's coming tonight. So, we are going to introduce the ordinance twenty twenty-five, which is changing the commissions from five to seven. As far as recruitment right now? Sorry, seven to five. As far as the recruitment that's in place right now, are we putting that on hold and inviting people to reapply once the new ordinance is in place?
I think we can just take the applications that we already have, can't we?
We can.
Okay. I would suggest to the council, if it's okay, or unless there's major objection, just from a, just an administrative task, it's nice to be able to go with the ones that we've got and be able to inform them that this is happening sooner rather than later, as opposed to reopening.
Sure.
We need to get our commissioners on board.
Yes.
So, definitely. So, yes, that is, that is correct. Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
There you go.
I'm gonna make you give your answer.
Anybody wanna do any more ordinances? That'll be good for now. I'm picking up. Last item is the discussion item, the Southern California Association of Governments, twenty twenty-five Regional Conference and General Assembly Staff Report.
This will be for the annual meeting for SCAG. Obviously, every city has a voice, but you have to designate a voting member to represent the city. Typically, in the past, it's been the mayor or the mayor pro tem.
Okay. And I would be interested in being the voting delegate as mayor. And Mayor Pro Tem Doby is on the SCAG board. So, she would be there as a representative of the SCAG board. So, any other comments? Um, let's see. Says that you need to read the title out loud.
Oh, no, sorry, not for that one.
Okay.
My apologies.
Okay, so do I have a motion on the SCAG delegate?
Remove that.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, you know what?
So, council announcements. So, let's start over to my left with Councilmember Hibbert.
Thank you. I'll bullet point this so we can get out of here early. I attended the Sunburst Youth Academy graduation at my church, Cottonwood. I volunteered with Art at Madera Steakhouse on Christmas Day to deliver Christmas meals to the veterans at the Long Beach VA Hospital. It was more emotional than I thought. We were, there was a team, I was going to the ICU, and there was an older gentleman, eighties, you know, in an elevator, and I asked him if he was visiting someone. He said, he said that he was, and I told him, I said, oh, you know, he's really fortunate to have a visitor like you on Christmas Day. And immediately, this guy, who reminded me of my grandfather, just had tears in his eyes and said, if you knew him, you'd say that he, that I was fortunate to know him. So, wanna congratulate and really say thank you to Art at Madera for doing this every year. He had eighty-five over, I mean, you saw a lot of the volunteers, almost eighty-five volunteers on Christmas Day to take meals to the VA.
To include the police officers that were working on Christmas Day.
He sent meals over here as well? I saw you picking up, I didn't know who sent them. Okay, glad to hear that. So, thank you to Art. I attended a former state Senator Janet Wynn's OC supervisor swearing-in. Like Shelley had said, there was hundreds of people there, including our Sheriff Barnes and District Attorney Spitzer. I also participated in the ribbon-cutting ceremony at our pickleball courts. And I guess there's apps for pickleball, so residents are asking if the courts are gonna be listed on the, on that app, on, I don't know, the pickleball enthusiasts are very excited, so that's exciting. I've played five games before, something about a kitchen and something like that, or... I met with our PD to go over our red light camera ticketing process. Since we've installed those three new lights, we have a lot more processing going on, so I had some residents ask me about the process that I was not that familiar with, so thank you for that, very informative. I attended the ACC OC Ethics Training. They make electeds every two years, go in and make sure that you're acting accordingly and ethical, in case you forget anything. Super informative. And on this past Friday, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Breakfast. Their, the chamber has a new board in there, Andrew Pulver and a lady named Susan Morales are the new co-chairs, so if you see them, please congratulate them. So far, they've got some really great ideas for this coming year. So, also, I want to just, wanna take a minute to, any of my residents watching on, you know, Channel Three in the district, it is an honor to be up here, to be elected, to represent somebody, anybody. I don't take that lightly, I don't take it for granted, so to everyone in District Five who I have the honor of representing, thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Nefertiti.
Thank you. I attended the Westcom, or the Westcom Board Meeting. Nothing related to report there, other than the labor negotiations occurring with the, what are they called, nine-eleven operators, I guess?
Dispatchers.
Dispatchers.
Dispatchers, dispatchers. Also attended the OC San, OC Sanitation Meeting. Nothing coming up really quick, but June or July of this year, they are, and I'll send some information, you probably already have it, but for the citizens, there might be some disruptions on Cerritos Avenue between Bloomfield and Los Alamos, because they're replacing about 5.5 miles of pipe, we're cleaning it and replacing over a hundred manholes, so there might be some traffic created as a result. That's about it.
Councilmember L.
Yeah.
Your next.
Okay. Sorry, I thought we were going direct down the line, so.
That's a surprise.
So, also went to the Janet Wynn Oath of Office. I went to the Laurel Park ribbon-cutting ceremony, which was great. I subsequently played there the following Saturday. We played on the court with the extra DNA that was left from our ribbon-cutting ceremony. Inside joke there, so, sorry. Also, the ACC OCC orientation and training. Got to hang out with my fellow councilpeople in a lot of these events. Also, the leadership training with the chief of police, which was a great event. I like that a lot. And I think that's about it.
Well, you know, since Councilmember Low brought it up, I would like to see any videos or pictures.
And I missed it the whole time. I was just briefed, I was briefed after the event, so I didn't even get to see it.
We have an understanding with staff that videos have been bleached.
I apologize.
I have no recollection of that event, ever happened, sir.
I'm just telling you, pickleball's a very dangerous sport. Mayor Pro Tem Doby.
I am not a squirrel. So, one of my absolute favorite events is the Sunburst Youth Academy graduation. They have about two a year, and they grow exponentially, and if you ever want to see, it's open to anybody, like, anybody can come and watch these, I call them babies, because they're just so close to my heart. It's a second chance. Like, you know, people were writing them off, they thought, you can't do anything better, and they said, watch this, and they get another opportunity. So, that's actually one of my favorite events that I get to attend. I went to a few mosquito and vector meetings. The one thing that I would like to, and this, all the information that I share, it's on our website, it gets pushed out on our social media, but I'm gonna say it during a live meeting, there is an issue with, what is it, typhus fleas? The flea-borne typhus, that's what it is. Put flea collars on your pets, especially your cats, because they seem to roam around a bit more. Please don't leave food out for stray animals. And there's more information on the Vector's site, but this flea-borne typhus is spreading, it's actually becoming its own little epidemic, and the best way that you can help yourself and your animals is to just put a flea collar on your friends. If you notice flea, extra flea activity, you can call Vectors, they'll come on out, and they will come and check your area, they'll spray for them, and they'll give you more information. But that, I wanna throw on everybody's radar. I, too, was at the pickleball court unveiling. I've learned that I'm not very good at pickleball, but it was a whole lot of fun. And I was sworn in as the first VP for ACC OC for twenty-five, twenty-six, and the relevance and importance of this is ACC OC focused specifically on issues and legislation for Orange County. Like, as a city, we're in all of the different ages, we've got SCAG, we've got Cal Cities, we've got blah, blah, OCAG, whatever, but ACC OC is Orange County-specific. So, any legislation that comes out specific to us, we get it first, and we get to pounce on it, get our people involved, and rally. And then, I would like to add two things, if I could get an update on them, whenever an update becomes available, but for the speed bumps in the alleyways, and then, because the bike lanes were mentioned, and I know that I have personally brought up my own fiasco with that new bike lane, if I could ask when those updates are available, that they be made known?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And with that, we will be moving into closed session, and city attorney, can you read us into closed session?
Yes, thank you, mayor. The city council will now recess into closed session to discuss items fourteen A and B as listed on this evening's agenda.